There we go, okay. They should be able to hear us now.
Thank you, Angela.
No problem.
Thank you.
So we're live right now?
Yep.
Oh, we're live, so you can see us.
Hi Tanner, we're gonna start the meeting, okay? Okay, hold on.
Is that my name?
Yeah, he's on the road. He's on the road. Say hi Tanner.
Hi everybody, I'm gonna be there in about a half hour. It's still going on, I'll walk on in.
Thank you, thanks Tanner, okay. Okay, um, welcome everybody to the Thursday, September 25th special meeting of the Mahopac Central School District Board of Education. Can I get a motion to open the meeting, please?
Some will.
Vice President Masafra, second.
Second.
Trustee Harrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so what I'd like to do right now is appoint Vice President Lucy Masafra as Pro Tem. Resolve the Mahopac Central School District Board of Education appoints trustee Lucy Masafra as meeting chair Pro Tem for the special meeting September 25th, 2025. Can I get a motion, please, to accept?
No moves.
Trustee Harrigan, second.
Second.
Second. Trustee Iacona, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, alright, um, so we have under new business, uh, we have, um, we have the appointment of the district clerk confidential secretary, uh, for the contract for the, for the Mahopac Central School District, uh, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby appoints Melody LaRaca as confidential secretary to the superintendent and district clerk to the board of education effective September 29th, Monday, 2025. The board further authorized the superintendent to execute the terms and conditions herein. Uh, the minutes of his, of his me, of this meeting, the board further designates Melody LaRaca as the records management officer, FOIL request officer, and public information officer effective September 29th, 2025. Can I get a motion to accept, please?
Some will. Don't we have to discuss the terms, the contracts, before we appoint her?
We're sent out to everyone today.
Sent out to everybody.
And I sent questions for our lawyers before we agreed to the contract that should be discussed. I sent like nine questions.
We're approving, we already did the, did this last time, right?
On August 24th, we approved her.
Approved her, we appointed her, so now we're, we're actually.
Well, we actually have a contract. And we actually have a start date, yeah. And we did, and we did, and we did look at the, uh, at the parameters of the, of the, of an original contract.
Right, so there was questions, and you said at that time that if you have questions, are we gonna get a copy? So we got the copy today. And Jen has, Travis has questions, and I, I think we should answer, we should go through the questions.
Well, this is personnel, so we would have to go into.
Discuss the other items, and then we can go into executive.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, we have to, um.
Okay, so.
There are other.
Do B and C, and then we have to motion to go into executive.
Okay, so we have, we have three, uh, we have three items, we have, um, A, B, and C. B being, um, the UPSU administrative MOA, um, be it resolved that pursuant to the terms of the May 1st, 2025 memorandum of agreement between the Mahopac Central School District, the UPSU administrative unit, and Ellen Segarra, the board of education hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to remove Ms. Segarra from her appointment as confidential secretary to the superintendent of schools effective the close of business September 26th, 2025. And then we have the ice merger with.
But we have to do that one first, because they're separate, then I'm part of a consent agenda, so we just need.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we need.
Sorry about that. So can I get a motion to accept, uh, B on the administrative? Trustee Masafra, second.
Second.
Trustee Harrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Tanner. Uh, okay, now we have the ice hockey merger with Brewster Central School District. This is for women's ice hockey, um, which we're excited about, uh, we're excited about getting this, uh, getting this moving along with all the other things that we provide here for, for our students and athletes. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby approves the agreement between the Mahopac Central School District and the Brewster Ice Arena for the use of the facility by the Mahopac Girls' Ice Hockey Team for the 25-26 school year. And can I get a, uh, can I get a motion to accept? Trustee, um, Travis, can I get a second, please? Trustee Masafra, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then we've got, um, thank you Tanner, and then we've got budget transfers, athletics. Um, this would be the, uh, resolved upon recommendation superintendent of schools, the board of education of the Mahopac Central School District hereby authorizes the following budget transfer for athletics to purchase two laptops and an iPad.
I just had a question about this. Do we not already have within our stock in technology, uh, the ability to fulfill this request without purchasing?
So, so, so just to real quick, this was, this is a, um, this is part of a program, it's part of the game time announcing, and it's a, it's a, it's part of the package that goes with the, uh, with our athletics, with our ability to, uh, to screen with, remember what's, what's now, which was local live is now called game time. So this is, this, this is the, um, the laptops and an iPad are for upgrading that system in order to, uh, to take advantage of more enhancements. Ben, uh, Ben August actually looked at, looked into. Yeah, yeah, this is, you know, this is something that's akin to their, to their work.
The other thing, the other thing that it does, it, uh, there's, there's no fear of anything inappropriate, like songs being said. Over the years, there's been, every once in a while, we, you know, they left it to the kids, and next thing you know, there's, every once in a while, there's that one word or two words. So this, this is a tie-in to our new system, which, which is really awesome. I mean, it's as professionally done as you can think. Which, you know, just makes our whole program, basketball, wrestling, the whole, all of our sports teams, uh, so I think it's a huge plus for us.
No, absolutely.
Was this budgeted, or wasn't budgeted? Is that?
Probably wasn't, uh, for the simple reason that, uh, game time has really kind of switched from local live to game time. So we were just transferring some funds from.
Where is it coming? It's coming from?
It's coming from our athletic budget, which, you know, we'll be able to.
Coming from account, contractual, officials, and meds.
What is contractual officials and meds?
Yeah.
I don't know that.
So it's coming from that budget line to materials and supplies, which makes sense.
Right.
So what's, you know, contractual officials and meds is?
Probably, uh, the contract that we have with our officials, with section one.
Okay, just find out, just so that's known.
We could.
Please, thank you.
Okay, alright, yeah, it's $3,094, and it's coming from, uh, yeah, contractual.
Officials.
That's official.
The officials that, that obviously do games.
Which, right.
It's not a definitive fund.
Right, right, so, okay.
That's where we took it from.
Alright, we'll get the expanded, uh.
No, I didn't, I swear to him, no.
Okay.
Nothing brush.
So gonna, can I get a motion to, uh, can I get a motion to accept, uh, item D, budget transfer for athletics?
Some will.
Trustee Masafra, second, trustee Travis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tanner, okay. Um, alright, so now what we'll do right now is we'll go into a.
Executive.
Oh, we're gonna motion to go into executive session, uh, for, um, uh, to discuss personnel, um, personnel matters. We'll, uh, we'll, we'll be, uh, we'll just jump out for, for a little bit, we've got some questions, and then we'll, we'll be right back to you, thank you.
Yes.
Motion to go into executive for, for the, uh, personal matters, some will, some moved.
Second.
Trustee, second, trustee Travis, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we'll be right back.
Including the front including the front including the front window so you have the front window which gets I'm sorry can I get a motion uh can I get a motion hello my whole pack community can I get a motion to close executive session go back into public trusty McCracken and thank you for joining Tanner second second trustee icono all in favor good all right now okay so
You have to open the meeting go back to the public right
We're good we got texted we got record on Angela you're good thank you very much okay okay so um so for for new business district clerk confidential secretary pardon me yes of course resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools the board of education hereby appoints Melody LaRaca as competent secretary to the superintendent and district clerk to the board of education effective September 29th 2025 the board further authorizes the superintendent to execute the terms and conditions herein the minutes of this meeting the board further designates Melody LaRaca as the records management officer foil request officer and public information officer effective September 29th 2025 can I get a motion to accept please vice president Masafra second second it was a tie I'm gonna go with Nicole it's pretty close Chris you gotta be faster than can I get a roll call though please just right yeah Chris hi Kyle yes yes I Nicole yes Lucy yes um Jennifer no
Nay no
Okay all right and I am an I so thank you very much I appreciate that Melanie congratulations looking forward to to getting getting you over here and getting things getting things going um and that's uh that's it for for us right now so great we're good everybody's good okay with that said it is five it is 5:43 can I get a motion to close the meeting please
Some more
Vice President Masafra second trustee McCracken all in favor
Hi
Thanks everyone community football somers Friday night tomorrow night 6:30